Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order of August 6, 2018. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Prochem Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman?
Councilmember Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Horiola?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here except for Mr. Hughesman. I'm open for a motion to excuse Mr. Hughesman's absence. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Hughesman on the August 6 meeting.
Mr. Madera?
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. I'm open for a motion and second to enter into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, to negotiations concerning incentives for potential economic development projects within the city. Mr. Madera?
Move to enter into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Pairs E.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank?
I second the motion.
A motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're now going into executive session. For the audience, don't believe this will take very long, so please bear with us and we will be back as quickly as possible. Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting.
Thank you, we're out of executive session. Thank you for your patience. We're gonna start with standing for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the staff will go ahead and pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
My name's Miley.
Mindy Diaz.
Elijah Diaz.
Esther Hall.
Elva Medina.
Elia Bybee.
Ryan Mates.
Carly Seller.
Glenn Murray.
George Maxey.
Hannah Mullin.
Bill Noble.
Brooke Maury.
Kevin Maury.
Travis Sundar, PD.
Dennis Moon.
Carolyn Keith, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Mike Brown, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Travis Gilchrist.
Haley Gilchrist.
Carol Emery.
Bruce Emery.
Joel Estrada.
Sid Crowsey.
Anthony Stolato.
Ryan Lance, Human Resources.
Ivy Gardner, Human Resources.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Troy Whitmore, United Power.
Tom Green, United Power.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. Next item is Proclamations and Recognitions. We're gonna invite the Human Resources staff forward to receive a proclamation for Employee Appreciation Month. Will please come forward? The city attorney, please read the proclamation.
Whereas Commerce City desires to build a quality community for a lifetime for growing a community of more than 54,000 residents and 1,400 businesses, and whereas the city's employees numbering more than 720, including seasonal and variable hours, strive to achieve this mission on a daily basis, providing excellent public services and customer experiences by anticipating needs, embracing diversity, and fostering relationships to sustain a growing and vibrant community; whereas the most recent citizen's survey reaffirmed employees' success in meeting our constituents' expectations; and whereas it is important to recognize employees' contributions through quality customer service and demonstrating their values of integrity, collaboration, innovation, respect, and excellence; and whereas the City Council of the City of Commerce City wishes to recognize and reward employees for their dedicated service and outstanding achievements, now therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I hereby proclaim the month of August 2018 as Employee Appreciation Month, thanking the city's employees for all of their hard work and dedication to the City of Commerce City.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to, for the Employees Appreciation Month for the Commerce City staff.
Thank you, Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and second. On the proclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'll start off by first thanking all of our employees for everything they do for our community. I know we're always challenged. We'll be challenged again tonight after looking at the list for citizen communication of things that need to be done in our community and how they get done. But I do want to commend all of you for the efforts you put forward every day to try to make Commerce City a better place for all of its residents. So, thank you, all the way from the city manager, all the way down to the last employee. I appreciate each and every one of you, so thank you very much. All right, if City Council, please join me down front. Now, I'd like to invite representatives from the Salute Family Center forward to the podium. Tonight, we are also doing a proclamation recognizing National Health Center Week. I'd like the city attorney to please read that proclamation.
Whereas Salute Family Health Center is a community health center is a nonprofit, community-owned, and operated health provider serving low-income and medically underserved people in the City of Commerce City and the surrounding catchment area; and whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system; and whereas as the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home for 27 million Americans in over 10,000 communities across the nation; and whereas Salute Family Health Centers serve 16,000 people in the Commerce City community and provides access to integrated primary care services, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services, to meet the needs and challenges of their communities; and whereas the health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, and in doing so, improves healthcare outcomes and reduces healthcare system costs; and whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's nearly 1,400 health center organizations with over 10,400 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor, Sean Ford, and the city council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, that the week of August 12 to 18, 2018, is National Health Center Week.
Thank you. Open for a motion? Mr. Madera.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Thank you. Mr., let me see, Councilman Frank.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and second to approve the proclamation is read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I want to thank the folks from Salute for coming in and providing a service to residents within our community. The service that you provide is needed in our community, so thank you very much. All right, if everyone will please join me down front. All right, that takes us through our proclamation portion of the evening. The city attorney does have an update for us on one of the items within the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I wanted to note for the audience present and for council that Resolution 201848, that's in the consent agenda coming up after, after the break, but after citizen communication, the incorrect item was attached, a correct and updated copy of that has been included in the back of the room and on the dais for council to review and for the audience to review in the back. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. All right, now brings us to citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record. Keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I have several folks on the list, and we'll just take it from the top. Have everybody come up in order. We'll start with Bruce Emery. Okay, if Kevin Maury would like to come first, then we'll have Kevin come up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Maury. I live at 151 Joplin Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commerce City Council, my name is Kevin Maury. I'm here tonight to request speed humps be implemented on Joplin Street to facilitate a permanent traffic calming solution to what we observe daily. I've been a resident on Joplin Street since 2011. My home fronts to a beautiful park and resides between an elementary school and a middle school. I want to thank and appreciate my fellow neighbors who do respect the posted speed limits and recognize they are traveling in a residential neighborhood. The problem I want you to understand is that there are some who do not travel Joplin Street, excuse me, as if they were on a residential neighborhood. This has been a concern of my neighbors and me for many years. We have brought this concern before the city council before, and we thank you for the implementations that we have seen thus far to address our concerns. Unfortunately, the traffic calming countermeasures to date do not prevent those who do not obey posted traffic signs from continuing to excessively speed on Joplin Street. We appreciate Commerce City conducting the traffic studies that it has over the past few years, but we believe the studies may have been reviewed based on criteria that does not take into account that Joplin is in a school zone uniquely between two schools and is adjacent to a city park. In researching how other cities conduct studies and choose to implement speed humps, proximity to schools and parks are common, strong considerations for increased traffic calming. Other considerations and implementations of speed humps are main travel routes and the adjustment of traffic due to their implementation. When you visit Frontera Village, you yourself will observe that the actual main travel route into the community was planned on 100th Street. The proper implementation of speed humps would not only improve traffic calming conditions on Joplin Street, but may actually restore the original traffic as designed by the original city plan. We experienced objections to our requests in the past based on the impact of emergency response vehicles and snow removal. I believe the thoughtful, planned, and proper implementation of speed humps will address such objections. I thank you for your careful consideration on this matter and allowing me to address what I believe is an important safety issue on Commerce City's Joplin Street. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Stay there for just a minute in case there's some other comments. In the past, we have placed speed humps in areas that may not meet all the criteria. However, what we've asked is also that we get the majority of the people that live on that stretch of road to agree to those speed humps. And so, we have to be careful, that's why we have regulations in place and criteria that needs to be met, is because we don't want to put speed humps in and have half the people on that street not want speed humps. So, there's a balance to how this has to work. So, I would ask that you work with Michelle Halsted, who's our acting director of Public Works, go through a scenario as we have on other streets that may not have met the criteria, but have the support from that neighborhood to put in speed humps. And through the community, the neighborhood doing their part, and working with our Public Works Department, I'm sure that we can find a solution to take care of the issues that you guys are dealing with.
I think if I may answer, we actually do have that petition signed by the majority of the members on the street.
That's great.
We did do, we did have a petition when we did this a few years ago, and we had all the members on the street. I believe the only persons that did not sign the petition did not answer the door on that day, so I believe we're missing two members of all the members that live on our street.
You know what? That's what matters to me, and if everybody on that street wants to have those speed humps for safety purposes, I'm willing to support you in getting those.
I thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the council? Saying none? All right, we'll go back up to Bruce Emery. All right, Travis is coming next.
Good evening. My name is Travis Gilchrist. I'm a fellow resident of Frontera Village that resides on Joplin Street. I come here tonight not only as a husband and a father, but a concerned parent of our community. I moved my family onto Joplin Street just over one year ago. We fell in love with the house, the meticulous upkeep of the neighborhood, and most importantly, the spacious Frontera Park just across Joplin Street. I knew moving into the house, we would consume a generous amount of traffic considering we are on the main street. However, I'm here tonight to express my concern of ongoing unstable speeding topic. My main concern throughout tonight is the safety of my two young daughters and all of the other children within the community. At the ages of four and seven, my daughters thoroughly enjoy being outside, playing with their toys, riding their bikes, and doing what other children most enjoy, and that's having fun. With that being said, even while I'm washing my vehicles, mowing my lawn, with them in arms' reach and in sight, I'm still not at ease with them playing outside of the house. This is simply due to the excessive speeding that takes place throughout, throughout our neighborhood at all times. Since we have moved into the neighborhood, I have witnessed cars racing from one stop sign to the another, only to reach their house that, that much faster, jeopardizing the safety of our community. As a loving parent, I am frantically awaiting the day a ball rolls down the street and my kids go after it, with a speeding car unable to stop or avoid the situation. Thankfully, there's not been any instances on our street thus far, but it is one that I think about every day. With your help, we can mitigate the situation with a simple solution of adding speed bumps down the busy street of Joplin. While this is not, while this will not lessen the amount of traffic we consume on Joplin Street, it will alleviate the excessive amount of speeding that takes place every day. In conclusion, I believe that this will help keep our kids and community safer while providing us a better quality of life. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. All right, Bruce.
You were talking about signatures. We have 13 out of 17 houses, and we have no problem, we will have no problem getting the rest because we had 100% signatures last time we had it. And so, everybody that we talked to, we're very excited about the idea that we're coming to talk to you. My name is Bruce Emery. I live at 10071 Joplin Street. And I guess you could say, in conclusion, we started addressing our Commerce City, our Joplin Street speed concerns to the city council beginning in August of 2011. Since this time, we have documented over 30 emails concerning this community safety issue. Some of these emails were sent and/or received from, sent and received from people presently seated in this room. The city has conducted several speed tests, and I would like to show you the results of the last speed test in 2016. We, when we talk about speed tests, we, I believe we've had at least two and possibly three speed tests already done. This is the last one that we had done in 2016. The three tests were, the tests were separated into three sections. The first section was Joplin Street north of 100th Avenue. Notice the total count, two-way traffic was 2,558 cars in a 48-hour period. Vehicles traveling above the speed limit were 1,252, 48%, 48.9%. The maximum speed was 47.30 miles per hour in a 25 mile an hour zone, and it's 25, and it's 20 miles per hour during the school sessions. Section two was Joplin Street north of 101st, which 101st is the middle of the park, and that section, the total count, two-way was 3,270 cars. Vehicle traveling, vehicles traveling above the speed limit were 1,524, for a 46.6% rate of over the speed limit. Section three was from Adalia South to 104th, that is the curve, that the start of the curve coming around. Notice that that count was 7,219. Vehicles traveling above the speed limit were 6,756 cars, for a 93.6% over the speed limit. The maximum speed was 70.5 miles per hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. Notice in section two, the max speed was 62.1 miles per hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. Anybody have any questions at this point?
I have, I do have a question, but it's for our staff. Michelle, what is the criteria based on this study to meet the need to mitigate speeding at this level?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to go look at our traffic calming policy. I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm happy to do that research and provide you an update.
Thank you. One of the things I do want to ask of staff, and I can do it by a motion if necessary, just to make sure that these folks' issue is looked into and they're met with, and we try to find some resolve, and then bring back a plan of how that resolve is going to take place to the council so that we know action is being taken. Do you want that by motion, or is that, do you think that's okay? All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Emery.
I've got a few more things to say.
Mr. Douglas does have a question of you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming and addressing this situation, and I know this is the first time I've talked to you about this, but there's also a family that lives down on 10161 Joplin Street who have a hard time getting in and out of their driveway because they're at the corner of where the access is to the school, and then the traffic goes up and down Joplin. So, there also needs, that also needs to be addressed too, how to take care to issue of people living close to the intersection of the school, if there's another speed bump down there, or some sort of three-way stop or so down there, where people feel safe pulling out of their driveway because there's continuous traffic in the morning and the, and the, and the afternoon. So, if that could be part of the, this study as well, that'd be great because this person's been dealing with that since they lived there, since the school's been built. And I know that, I'm not sure if he has approached you, but I've had several questions, not only from that address, but the two, the homes to the left and right of that address as well.
I believe that, Mr. Douglas, I believe that person who, that you're referring to is here tonight, and he will hopefully get a chance to speak when I'm done, and he will be part of it. In fact, he's the one I just did, got his last signature. So, I'll give this to whoever would like to have it. After the last speed study test, we believe the city took several positive actions, narrowing the width of the lanes, having parking only on the east side of the street, and adding and changing some of the street signage. We were told, studies have shown that reducing the width of the street would reduce vehicle speed. However, this proactive strategy has not worked. The speeds have become excessive and more frequent. We are asking the members of the city council to consider approving the installation of three speed humps on Joplin Street. One between approximately halfway between 100th Avenue and 101st Avenue. Another one halfway between 101st Avenue and East 101st Way, which is right where the school is. And then, one approximately halfway between 101st Way, which is the street that runs east and west in front of the school, and just on this side of the bus entrance, so that the buses are not affected by the speed humps, but as they, people come around that corner, they will be slowed down. As they reach the entrance to the school, then as they go to the stop sign on 101st, they will be slowed down again, and then they can stop. And what we're trying to do is halfway through between the stop signs is slow them down so it's not a racetrack through there.
Mr. Emery?
Yes, sir.
I just, I have to stop you there just because you, I allowed you to go way over the time of it.
I'm sorry.
However, I want to talk to you for a minute before you walk away.
Okay.
We're going to have our engineers look at it, our Public Works Department's going to look at it, and working with the residents along that stretch of road are going to come up with a plan to bring back to city council to deal with the problem.
That's all we hope for, that's why we were here, to let us talk to you.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, Carol Emery. All righty, that's a good answer. That helps me.
You mean number three.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Ryan?
Excuse me, my name is Joe Estrada. I'm behalf of Frontera Village. I didn't sign up to speak, but if it's all right with you, I'd like to.
Yeah, you know what? Let me go through the list, and I'll call on you after I'm done with the list, and I'll let you come up and speak.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I want to have Ryan come up right now.
Do I have to press anything? No, you're good, okay. Sure. My name is Ryan Mates. I live at 10583 Joplin.
I live at one zero five eight three Joplin Street. No relation, which is odd because I didn't understand what was going on there. Tonight, I'm coming to talk to you about a few things. So, you may be aware that today Initiative Ninety-Seven got turned over to the Secretary of State's office with a hundred and seventy-one thousand signatures. Needed to get on the ballot, as you probably know as well, ninety-eight thousand. I don't want to insult your intelligence, but everybody's aware of what Initiative Ninety-Seven is, correct? Okay, thank you. So, it's been trying to get on the ballot for the last two times, so two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen. And I think this time shows that the residents are starting to get fed up with what's going on around the houses and schools, just standing up to the opposition who have these deep pockets, as well as overcoming the harassment that happened while trying to gather signatures. I personally witnessed this happen at Civic Center Park. I was down there getting lunch at the food trucks, and a lady got very upset because two young gentlemen had posters, and they were walking right up next to her and basically getting in between her and the citizens that she was trying to get petitions from. And I guess my question is, when this gets on the ballot in November and when it passes, what kind of effect will this have on the fracking that is planned to happen around One Hundred and Fourth and Tower and Highway Two?
Well, I think it all depends on whether it passes or not. We're not the judgment on that, the people are the judgment on that.
Definitely.
If it passes, we will adjust what we have to adjust to make sure, and, and it's not us, it's the state of Colorado that will force these restrictions on how, what proximity wells could be based on the setbacks that are inside the amendment. And that will be law at that point in time. Today, it is not law. So, as initiatives and measures pass at the state level, we have to comply with those as law. So, those, those setbacks that are, that are set in that ballot measure will then become law, and they'll be enforced by the state and therefore enforced locally. So, right now, we can't enforce those things on the oil companies or the drilling companies because the state has jurisdiction over oil and gas. So, that would then put the, put the law in place, and those setbacks would have to be legally met. So, we would have to, we would have to share in enforcing that state law. That's how that would work.
Thank you. Can I address one more thing really quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Broomfield, as of four days ago, proposed approving a comprehensive drilling plan of eighty-four wells. Why can't Commerce City do the same thing?
Well, we're in discussion right now. We were having a study session coming up with all the folks from up in the northern area, and we're having some of the oil and gas companies come in. And back in two thousand and eleven, we actually set some things in place for an extraction agreement, which would cause these oil companies to sign on. And based on the legal guidance that we were given, we had one of the toughest regulations possible at that time. We are revisiting that now, and we're having an upcoming meeting to hear from both sides, the industry and the residents. And then we'll utilize our legal professionals, and we have some outside counsel for oil and gas that will help guide us on what we can and can't do. And then this council, it's not me, it's the, the body of the council will make the decision on what they want to do at that time.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, Sid?
She doesn't want to talk.
Oh, she doesn't want to talk? All right, come on up, you're next.
Hello, Joe Estrada. I live in Frontier Village, right there on the corner of one oh one nine one Joplin Street. Our current racetrack is, just gotten out of hand. We've seen kids walking from Seven Eleven with their drinks in their hands nearly mauled over by speeding vehicles. All the signs are being run over, flashing lights are being taken down, and it seems that the cops just ain't doing their job, they're not there enough, you know what I'm saying? So, I seen, you, you heard everybody else, you seem to kind of get where we're coming from. It's just, it's just getting, I've personally had to chase people down, you know what I'm saying, to, you know, I'm ready to get at it because these people are just taking advantage. And they see that we're getting frustrated with it, so they're antagonizing us more. So, we just, we really need something done.
I'm glad you came up. You know, it's not just about Public Works and, and engineers designing and figuring out how we deal with the problem. Our deputy chief is in the room in the back paying attention to everything that's being said. I would expect that you have a little more police presence, maybe even get the trailers up there, and in the midterm, while we're trying to figure out a physical solution, try to, try to do more enforcement in the area.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, too.
Well, yeah, I really appreciate it because something really needs to be done.
Right.
And another thing, too, is that the school lied to us when it was being built. They said it was gonna be enough traffic for two buses and a car on each side to pass by safely. Well, that was a lie, plain out lie, because there's no way you could travel safely with that many cars on each side, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, we get out, we park on the street, we're practically parking on our grass from avoid from getting hit. So, when we get our vehicle, you literally have to stand like this and watch for them to speed by you, or else you can't even pull into your parking lot. When the, when school's going on, you can't pull into your parking lot or out. You're late for work because that mile-long line, what, seventy-plus percent of the kids are being bussed into our, our school right there in front of us, how is that fair to us right there on the corner? With the big old piece of land, land open, vacant, right next to it, that the school owns.
Well, I want to talk to you real quick about school, schools and how they build, and I think this is important for people at home watching, too. When it comes to development in our city, we have the authority, and we enforce the authority to require the amount of parking that is necessary for that business to do, to do business and provide parking for their customers, okay? That's what we, we get to, we have that authority to enforce making them put in the amount of parking they need for any business that comes to our city, but not for school districts. The school does not have to abide by our parking regulations because they are immune to that part of our development planning laws. And so, as frustrating as it is for you when you go into Reunion or any of these neighborhoods, I've got them down here, Central Elementary off Holly Street in, in the southern portion of the city, that do not have enough parking for the teachers, let alone for people to park to go to events or whatever's happening at the school. However, the city does not have the authority to enforce that regulation upon the schools. That, they are forgiven for having to put in the amount of parking necessary. We, as a council, have met with the school districts, and we have talked to them about improving parking opportunities on the school, but they have to do it, they're a separate governing body, and they have to do it on their own. We can't force them to do it. Where we could force Seven Eleven or King Supers to have the parking necessary for their business, we don't have the authority to do that to a school district. We have two school districts in Commerce City, and we have met with both of those school districts and gave them our concerns about lack of parking at their facilities. So, I think it's important for residents to know that, that it's not the city that doesn't make that parking big enough. It's a school district, and we're trying to work with them to improve that. So, that causes major congestion in our residential neighborhoods because of people parking on street and affects people in the neighborhood. So, it's kind of a double-edged sword for us, but we're trying to get the school districts to see the reason why they need to put more parking on the properties that they own.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, it's really frustrating when it wasn't even supposed to be there in the first place. That was their selling point to our home. See where we're coming from now.
Absolutely. I, I appreciate you coming in today. Teresa.
She's not here, she's in the hangar.
Okay, Teresa's not here. Carly, you're next.
Carly Seller, two two six Oakland Street, Aurora, Colorado. And I just wanted to follow up with one of Ryan's points about Ninety-Seven. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but according to Teresa, one of the things she wanted to talk about tonight is Extraction has sent out over a hundred and fifty of their lease agreements. They were delivered in the mail on Friday and Saturday, and she knows that because the postman indicated that to her. So, Extraction is getting their leases out. I came tonight just because I wanted to talk about why I recently moved. I moved to Commerce City in May of two thousand and six and lived there until July nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen. When I moved there in two thousand and six, it was a brand-new neighborhood. This house that I lived in Commerce City, in Commerce City, that's the longest I've ever lived anywhere in my life. So, we were very attached to that house. In two thousand and sixteen, my husband and I decided to refinance. The interest rates were a little bit lower, so we refinanced the mortgage with our taxes and insurance. Our mortgage payment was eleven hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. During the six-year period, a number of things changed. The first thing that changed was my husband got a job at a lottie in Santa Fe for RTD, and his commute was an hour and a half one-way. So, we began debating, do we move, do we stay? We weren't really sure, we weren't sure where we would move. We really liked the area. Then other things started happening. The school district has really tanked, it's at the bottom of the list. The water district is working on the hard water, but it still isn't great-quality water. And we started getting busted the last three years with airplanes overhead constantly. And I would call the noise hotline, but there was really very little that could be done about that because of agreements that were made, I guess, twenty years ago. I got my first notice from Extraction in March of this year, and I started stepping up my interest in what was going on. I've always come at different times to the City Council meetings and tried to kind of keep a handle on things, but I really stepped it up after that. I started a dialogue with a number of the City Council people and with some of the employees here at the city. And one of the things that came to me was during a conversation with an individual, they told me I was looking at gas and oil all wrong, that I should see them as my friend, that I was thinking of them as an enemy, and I needed to just get my head in gear because they were coming. There was very little the city could do or could change that in all likelihood we would have the drilling. I did own my mineral rights, so I was in touch with Extraction at that time. My biggest point, though, is my last mortgage payment that I made was July first, and it was seventeen hundred and fifty-nine dollars. In six years, my mortgage payment, my fixed cost of living in Commerce City went up six hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. The taxes are very high here, whether or not that's the city, the county, the special tax district, it doesn't matter, that's what citizens are paying, and it's very costly. The school district needs improving, the water district needs improving, the airplanes are overhead, and now you're asking people to live with gas and oil? I mean, it just makes no sense to me. I did not have trouble selling my house, but I believe I sold it for less than what it really should have been valued at because I just wanted it done. So, I would just ask that the City Council going forward really consider some of these decisions that are ahead, particularly with gas and oil, because that's gonna make a huge difference when people see those drilling sites, not just the little rigs out there, but when they see a ten and twelve-acre area with the horizontal drilling and the methane gas burning off, it'll make a difference in what the housing costs are. I know the city has a debt load right now of about five hundred million dollars. I'm not sure how, besides taxes, you intended to pay for that, but, you know, it makes a difference what these houses go for and the availability, if they can be sold or not. So, I, I thank you, and it was twelve very nice years living here. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Glenn Murray.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Glenn Murray, one one oh one oh Havana Street, Brighton. I've got several issues I'd like to talk to you about. Matter of fact, I, I've got a request for some action. It's on a street called Roslyn Street. It's west of Firehouse, or Fire Building Number Four down in Commerce City off of Rosemary Street. We own a building down there. We have been vandalized now, had theft about six times in the past year, chain-link fence, cut, barbed wire, cameras, the whole nine yards. The street, I've got nine adjacent, or nine property owners, including the, the chief of the Fire Department, has signed this thing in the sense that as far as lighting and road improvements on Roslyn Street, they need to be addressed, that street's in terrible shape. For the Fire Department's perspective, they've got certain requirements for a street. I think you'll find that this street does not meet those requirements. So, if you could take some time and take a look at that and see what we can do to improve that. We have, the last time we had theft, they wore hoodies, cut the fence, parked on the street, there's cameras. The unfortunate part, it's too dark, couldn't read license numbers on the, on the vehicles. So, and, and I'm not alone, the adjacent people that have signed this, the other, other owners have had similar kind of issues on their property. So, it's something that, that needs to be addressed. Something else that's happened right in that area, there is a new asphalt company that sits right off of Roslyn Street there, and I don't think it meets any of your city codes. From what I've seen on it, it, it's not good. You might be...
Can I ask you, do you know, is that in the city or is it in the county?
I'm sure it's in the city.
Well, some of those properties over there are not annexed.
The businesses, I think all the businesses are annexed into the city, yes. If it's a home, you're right, it's not in the city. That's, that's unincorporated Adams County, but the businesses are. And as a matter of fact, this new business I know is in the city. So, the other thing, too, is if you would take a look at the road on, by the Buffalo Run Golf Course, the east of the, of the golf course, that dirt road is, needs some help. I know the city's done some stuff on it, but you've added three new entrances from the housing development, so the traffic has increased dramatically on that road, and the road is, it needs some help also. Another issue that I wanted to talk to you about, you just, the city just built a brand-new beautiful rec center, right off One Hundred and Twelfth Avenue. If you take a look south of that rec center, you're gonna see weeds approximately three and four foot tall, not exactly the image I don't think you want for your city. Not only when those weeds mature this fall and winter, your adjacent neighbors are going to have the, the pleasure of, of dealing with those as they blow across their property. And heaven forbid, if there's a fire, you do have a problem there. And unfortunately, there's a lot of properties, or at least some properties in the city that are very similar, very much like this, and I think you'll find most of those are absentee landowners. They don't see it, and they don't care. Well, I shouldn't say they don't care, they don't see it, so maybe they just, I don't know. But you, as a City Council, should address that. I've been in front of you before on a weed issue, this is just another example, and it's right across the street from your new rec center. So, if those could, those issues could be addressed, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in today, Glenn. I want to ask staff to have code enforcement follow up on the weeds at One Hundred and Twelfth Avenue. I also would like to ask them to have code enforcement go and make sure that the asphalt facility is in compliance. Secondly... Secondly, I think it's important that you know, we just finished our Irondale Comprehensive Plan, and our budget retreat is coming up, and we will be discussing where dollars will be spent and how they will be spent, and it's up to this council on directing those dollars. But we know that with that plan, now at least we have a guide to start taking care of roads in the Irondale area. It's not just Roslin, it's Verbania, Xenia, eighty-six. There's a lot of other folks that have the similar type issue in that Irondale area. And we'll be looking at a plan on how to start attacking that area and making those improvements. But thank you for coming in tonight.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And also, there is a request for action that's been signed by all the businesses I've said.
Yep, I've got it here.
And there's some pictures from the Fire Department. So we did a little homework on it and appreciate your help.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Tom Green and Troy Whitmore.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We promise nothing controversial. I agree. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and we're here tonight to give you money. We're an electric cooperative. We're owned by the people we serve. We serve the city of Commerce City, the northern half, so you're a part-owner of United Power. And one of the things that we like to do is incentivize people that invest in energy-efficient lighting, appliances, and other electricity devices. What you did on Tower Road and on Highway Two as part of your projects there was you invested in LED lights. And thanks to the help of Michelle Halsted, she may be acting Public Works Director, but she's a lady of action because I've been asking for these invoices for forever, and it just took her a week. I've submitted those lights. There was a hundred and four on Highway Two, and there was two hundred and four on Tower Road. And by installing those, I'm bringing you a check here today for sixty thousand eight hundred dollars. All LED lights. And the good news is, is the lights that you installed on Highway are on Street One Hundred and Twelfth in the new rec center parking lot and in the new rec center are all still eligible. And so once I get the receipts for those, I'll submit those, and hopefully I'll bring you another big check for this. But we are honored to serve you, we're happy to do it, and we're happy to give you this money because we appreciate you investing in energy-efficient lighting. And the great thing about these is they're not going to be burnt out. So they're going to burn and be bright for a very long time. So we're really glad you did it. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to say a couple of things. First of all...
Can I say, with me today is my boss, Public Affairs Officer Troy Whitmore. I don't want to get in trouble.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. I appreciate both of you coming in tonight. I've known both of you for years, Troy probably a lot longer. But I have to say some good things about United Power tonight because you're not just the power company that provides service to our residents. We're not just a partner in a cooperative. Tom Green is at the Commerce City Rotary Club every Wednesday, participating in day-to-day activities within our community. You're always there to help. I watched you guys at the fair this last week. You aren't just a business. You are what I wished every business in our community was. And I'd like to get it that way, is a corporate citizen that participates within the community and tries to do right by the residents. This LED rebate, I have told a lot of neighbors, they go to get LED Christmas lights, they go get a new LG refrigerator, those type of things, to come down and to go over to your office and get the rebate forms and fill them out. Because a lot of your rebates almost cover the cost of new Christmas lights. They significantly make it much more affordable for that refrigerator. So not only are we using less power by taking advantage of the rebate programs that you have, people talk to me about solar, I know you have your solar farm, and people can participate in that. So I truly consider United Power and you guys, and particularly corporate residents of this community, and I applaud you for everything you do for our community. And thanks for the check, by the way.
Those forms are even online. You don't even have to come to the office. We got those rebate forms online. You can just download them yourself, fill them out, and mail them in.
Well, and I think it's important to mention that you do have one program, you can mention what it's called, where you can get online and you can download an app that literally will tell you minute by minute what your usage is at your home. And to track your own usage at your own home, and when you have certain lights running or certain appliances running, you can see it peak and drop so that you know what those usages are and what's using the bulk of the power at your home. Do you know what that program's called?
That is our Power Portal. It's an online tool available to any of United Power's members. And we download the data every night at midnight, so you can see your previous day's usage up to fifteen-minute intervals. And if you want to see if the kids left the door open or if they left their refrigerator running, it's really easy to see, and it's a really useful tool. When people start looking at it and utilizing it, they realize the many different ways they can save energy. So I appreciate you mentioning that, and we just hope more people will use it.
Absolutely, so thank you. Troy?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please. A lot of times we're asked why we do the things we do in our community. Why do we have people like Tom Green that spends two-thirds of his days in Commerce City? Well, I kind of boil it down to this. As we all know, utilities are monopolies. The folks in North Commerce City, they don't have a choice. They get United Power. South Commerce City, they get Excel Energy. So with that right of having a monopoly and keeping facilities at a minimum comes, I think, a great responsibility for those businesses that have been given that right. And one of the things that I think is very appropriate is that we, since we have that right of being a monopoly, we owe it back to our constituencies, our mutual constituents, to be good corporate citizens. And we really appreciate you mentioning that. It's been great to work with you folks for many, many years. And one final note, I truly appreciate you recognizing your employees. You've got a great team. We have a great relationship with the Minnie Michelles and others throughout your facilities, and Tom has got great relationships with everybody else. And last but not least, we've got a good relationship with our city council members, some that we've known forever and some just recently. And odd note, Mayor Ford and I have the same birthday. However, judging by the gray hair, guess who's older?
I don't know, I'm catching up quick.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, guys, for coming in, and thanks for the money. We'll make sure it goes to beneficial use.
Hey, Tommy.
Rick, absolutely.
Remember, we talked about today in that meeting we were in about we've got an event coming up here in September, I believe you said it was? Maybe you want to explain that to the council here?
Well, that's a little different. That's for our joint chamber of commerce. But what I will say is that in the next couple of weeks, we'll be sending out more than four and a half million dollars of capital credit checks back to the members of United Power. So I'll be back here in a couple of weeks to give the Commerce City ones, and every one of the residents in Commerce City that has earned capital credits is going to get their check in the mail. And that's another thing we're happy to do. Again, we try not to make money. When we do make money, it's called margins, and we give it back to the members. And so we'll be happy to give four and a half million dollars to the members of United Power this year.
Thank you, guys. Don't take the check now. All right, as long as we got the good one. Now, is there anyone else in the audience that showed up tonight for Citizen Communication that didn't get a chance to sign the list that would like to speak at Citizen Communication? Seeing none, we'll move on in our agenda. All right, this one's a little tough for some members, especially one. Validation of a vacancy. At the July sixteenth council meeting, Councilmember Diaz announced his resignation from the city council effective this evening. Councilmember Diaz has served over three years on the city council, first in June through November of two thousand and eleven, and then December twenty fifteen through this evening. I want to ask Councilmember Diaz to confirm that he is resigning tonight and any comments that he would like to make.
Real quick, Mayor, is this like the sitting at the altar and waiting for the pastor, asking you if you want to say, "I do"?
That's it. You either, yeah, you're in or out right now.
Yes, I will be resigning effective tonight.
Great. So part of our process is we have to have a visible vacancy. Even though someone says, "Hey, I'm going to resign", we can't start taking applications to fill that vacancy until that chair is empty. And tonight, it will be empty. But I would like to first thank Councilman Diaz for all of his efforts for this community for many, many years. We always haven't seen eye to eye on every issue, which I don't believe I could say that we have with any council member up here. We're always trying to do the right thing, and we have, we each have our own opinions and how things should be. And that's why there's nine people. But as one of those nine, you have filled that seat well. You have honored your position. I think you should be proud of the time and effort that you have given to your community. I think the community should be thankful to have had the opportunity to have you serve on their behalf for many years. So you will be missed. It's going to be interesting to try to fill this seat and have the same quality of a person with the background and the information that you have. You know, every year you learn something new, and you utilize that to your benefit for anything that coming forward. And so to start fresh, it's a process, and you know that process as well as any of us. But, so you will be missed, and it's been great watching your family grow over the years and your kids grow up and some of the fun things that you do with them. Your lovely wife, it's been a pleasure, all the different times that we've had the opportunity to share some time together. Apollo, I truly mean it. You have been a great person to work with, and I respect you, and I respect your decision to do what you're doing for the betterment of your family. So congratulations, and I wish you nothing but positive financial gains and family gains over the years. I think you deserve it, and I want you to do well. Absolutely. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. First, I want to thank Apollo's family for sharing him with us. It's kind of a complete circle because Apollo was appointed before he was elected, and he also waited because when it came to election, of course, I wasn't a ballot with him. And I was here, and he didn't continue. And for him to hang in there as a citizen and wanting to give back to his community and not give up, I give him praises for that. And we have grown together and put two feet and both our feet in a lot of different things we both had interest in and with a great outcome. And it is going to be hard to fill your position. I think we're going to need someone who is not open-minded, but actually look at as what you see, the vision years out that will outgrow us. And you bring that wisdom with your young age, and I appreciate that. So it's going to be hard. But I know we have to move on. You made a hard decision. I know you waited around for a while, and I mean, tonight you're going to come in and say, "Hey, I had a second thoughts and I'm going to continue", but that didn't happen. So I wish you luck in your choice to move forward by residing in Commerce City and working in the county. So you will be missed. Thank you, Paul. And my wife says she misses you as well, and she could not be here, but she really appreciates your service and your leadership as well. Thank you.
Mr. Teter?
Yes, I want to thank you again for answering the bell twice. And we came to you two different times to come to council, and you've accepted it. Both times you did a great job for us. I know, like I said, we, coming back the second time had to be kind of tough for you, but thank you for coming back for your short time here, and you're, you almost completed a full term. You know, but you're taking on a very tough job, and I want to congratulate you for taking that job on. That is going to be a tough job, and I think you're the man for it, and I hope you do very well and succeed in your endeavor of your new job.
Mr. Madera?
Yes, so, you know, anybody who's ever gotten the pleasure of meeting Apollo, he just has a gift. You know, with people, he'll make you crack up, and a lot of people don't know this about him, but he's an impeccable dancer. So, you know, maybe at the reception, you can get him to show you some of his moves. But, you know, he's just going to go on to the county and do a lot of great work. So he's not finished serving the people, and that's what I admire most about Apollo. Most of his career's been serving others, whether it's children through education programs, or now he's gone on to the county to help solve one of the biggest problems that we have here in the county, and that's dealing with homelessness and moving forward with that. And he's kind of going to be a pioneer there because they're starting him off on his own. And, you know, I couldn't think of a better guy to have this program than Apollo. And, you know, I was selfish. I told him not to take it because I didn't want him to see him leave the council. But I know he made the right decision, and in the end, you know, the county and Commerce City is going to benefit from it. So thanks, Apollo.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Okay, no tears tonight, okay? I promise. First of all, you know, we go way back as far as applying for the, what do you call it? The vacancy, that was back in, what, two thousand and ten? And we kept running back and forth with, he was appointed, then he was running, and then he sat out, just like Steve mentioned. But I just want to thank you so much for coming back. And we ran together, and we went against some really tough situations with our family circumstances in two thousand and fifteen. And I just want to say, you know, I not only consider you a great colleague, and I'm proud of the service that you've provided to our community with passion, but I also consider you a good friend. So this isn't goodbye. As we had talked before, this is definitely just a farewell for now because I know that we will be working together on another level and continually. And I do need to see your kids grow up and get into high school, into college. I don't want to miss any of that. Thank you, Mindy and kids, for allowing us to have your dad, your husband, serve on our council. He's been a great asset, and we're going to definitely miss him.
Councilwoman Frank?
So I just wanted to thank you, Apollo, for the time that you spent with me while I was campaigning, meeting with me, kind of letting me know what was going to be in store if I was successful, and your honesty with that. And then I also very much appreciate coming here, being new on council, and you're just so overwhelmed, but just kind of talking through things with me. And, you know, I just really, really appreciate everything that you've, you know, taken the time to talk with me through to issues that I've had or concerns that I've had. You've absolutely been such a good sounding board for me. And so I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it. And, you know, we had very long talks when you talked about leaving and doing this position. And I just do not think there is a better person for the job, and I told you that from the beginning. And I'm just, I'm very, very proud of what you're doing and excited for your new opportunity. So, wish you the best.
Councilman Wardiola?
Again, I just want to thank you, Apollo, for being that guide and providing some mentorship for me. You know, not knowing what I was getting myself into, but being, always being positive and being real. And I'm with Oscar, you know. When I heard, I told my wife, like, "Man, I hope he don't take it", and he's just joking around, just because it's exciting to work next to you. And, but you're going to do great things, and I know we'll be in contact. Our passion for education and our community, you know, goes hand in hand. So congrats, and thanks.
So there are a few things that we have to get through before I can let you walk away. First, I need to invite you to step down from this dais. Oh, yeah, you get to talk. You want to talk down there, you want to talk up here? Why don't you, why don't you do it from up here? It'll be your last big hurrah. Go ahead.
I think that was just a little bit uncomfortable. I think, all of us being on council, I don't think we're used to having good things set our way, especially during a council meeting. So that was completely unusual. So, that was completely unusual. I was like, "Wow, good thing," especially after citizen communication, right? If you guys thought that my wife and kids were really excited for me to come home, you may be surprised. When I told them I was taking the job, and that would mean having to resign from city council, kid you not, my kids, Miley, who's 11 over there, and my son Elijah, who's eight over there, their first response was, "Wait, does that mean we don't get Meatless Mondays anymore?" And my wife's response was, "But that's the night that I get to watch Disney's Fairy Tale Weddings and The Bachelorette." So, I think we're gonna have to really figure out what our new normal is. I appreciated the residents who reached out to me, basically asking, you know, "Hey, what's going on? Is your family okay?" You guys kind of alluded to it earlier. But just to kind of walk you guys through it, I just think back in May, I just kind of made this decision that, for those who don't know me, I'm very spiritual, and so I just had this thought that God was pushing me in a different direction. And so, taking a leap of faith, I quit my job, trying to figure out exactly what that next step was. So, I spent some time with the family in Orlando, and Conference in Vail, and just really trying to decompress as I figured out what was next. And lo and behold, I got a call from the county and was offered the position for poverty reduction and homelessness, reducing homelessness throughout the county. This was a position that they've had before, someone left, they were just getting their wheels under them, so it was something relatively new that not many counties are trying to do, which is to put a countywide effort to reduce homelessness and poverty. As unicorn as that position sounded, the hard part was having to resign from city council, because I'm working directly in the regional affairs department underneath the county manager, Ray Gonzalez. There was a lot of potential for conflicts of interest, so I had to make that tough decision, spent the next three, four, or five days, really, to borrow a term from LeBron James, bringing people into my decision cave and talking to them. A lot of them are on council, and some are not, trying to figure out if it made the most sense for me. And obviously, I took it, 'cause here I am standing in front of you guys, making my full announcement of me resigning. So, I do want to thank my wife and kids over there. They took, they basically followed through on all these crazy journeys that I end up taking them on, from the 10 years I spent ball-boying with the Nuggets. So, I was gone, what, two or three nights a week, I think is what it turned out, to doing the cultural council and really getting that going, to applying for that seat back in 2011, that Steve and Crystal alluded to earlier, and then to starting that youth commission, because a couple of kids went up to me and asked me, "Hey, how do we get more involved in the city?" And then to running again in 2015, answering that bell to what Rick Teeter, Mayor Pro Temp Teeter, just kind of brought up, especially with, as Crystal pointed out, we both had some rough years that year. I was asked to run basically two and a half weeks after I'd lost my sister to cancer, after she battled it for a year. So, that was a very emotional time, but, and yet, my family stood by me as I decided to go through that. The residents, honestly, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to listen to your concerns, listen to your ideas, and really do something with it. It's been an incredible, incredible experience. I'm really amazed at some of the things that we get to solve on a daily basis. And to the council members, I think my biggest regret is the fact that I don't get to work with this new nine much longer than the eight months that we've gotten a chance to spend together, because I really do think that all four of you, even Councilman Huesman, who's not here right now, all four of you are bright individuals whose heart is in the right place, and I knew that you guys were gonna do some great things together, and I would have loved to have been there. Unfortunately, that opportunity didn't really present itself, so I'm really gonna miss you guys, but I can't wait to see what you guys do. One of the things that I calculated, and I mentioned this to city manager McBroom last week, of the three years I was on council, almost a full-term Mayor Pro Temp Teeter, I served with 17 different council members. Every single one of these seats completely overturned, even mine, 'cause I was at-large before, and now I'm representing the ward. And so, I've gotten a chance to learn from every single individual, all 17 of them, and that has been an incredible experience. But the one thing that I can also say is that the one thing that's remained constant from today to a while ago was the staff. Brian McBroom was there, Roger Tinklinberger was there, Michelle Halsted was there, Carolyn Keith was there, Mike Brown was there, still kind of hanging out back there. Judge Juarez was there. Just really thinking about all those great staff members who really, they're as committed to this mission as we are. And you guys, it should be said that you guys are the ones who turn the dreams and the visions of the residents and the council members to reality. And so, I can't thank you staff enough, too bad that the staff already left, for the employee appreciation. I can't thank you guys enough for the support that you've given us, council members, and me personally, over the last three years, because you guys really do make it happen. And so, I'm gonna miss seeing you guys around. I think that's definitely gonna be one of the toughest parts. And I think, you know, the last thing that I'll say, it's my party, right? So, I can just keep going if I want to. The last thing that I really do want to say is, you know, council members, just really, as you guys are right now, just remember you're doing this for the residents, but give as much thought as you can to every single vote that you have, because every single vote does matter. I obviously can't go too much into it, but I still remember sitting back in exec session in 2011, when our city manager had left, and we were trying to figure out who it was that we were gonna appoint. It was a pretty divided room. We spent about 45 minutes really kind of having those discussions. Don't worry, Sheasley, I'm not gonna go into details. But just looking back, obviously, the result of that was the interim city manager that we appointed was none other than city manager Brian McBroom. And it gave him the opportunity to really prove how well he can do this job, and the consequent council ended up basically hiring him on as the full-time city manager, and he's been in this post for about seven-plus years now. And I shudder to think of how differently this city as an organization would be running if that decision did not come down to city manager McBroom and all the great things that he has accomplished. So, Brian, you've been a tremendous support to me over the last three years, and I know that you and me will maintain a professional, as well as a personal relationship now. Now, we're allowed to do that. And so, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. And so, again, I just want to thank everybody. I honestly want to thank God for the opportunities that I've been given, the city as an organization, and the residents for really trusting me and joining me on this journey, and my wife and kids for their support. And I guess I'm coming home, and I'm about to sit down with you guys just shortly, so thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Apollo. All right, now, I'm gonna ask that you step down from the dais and join your family. Take your bag with you.
Is there food I can take on the way?
No, no, you're done.
Your nameplate?
Yeah, you can take your nameplate. Now, I need to ask for a motion to determine that a vacancy exists on this council. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion that a vacancy does exist on this council.
Is there a second, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second stating that there is a vacancy on this council. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. There is truly a vacancy on this dais. Now, I would like to have the council join me down in front of the dais to present former councilmember Diaz a few parting gifts.
Can you handle all that?
Yeah, why don't you grab his nameplate for him?
Yeah, I'll get that, yeah.
Stealing water, too. Hell, yeah.
What else has he got over here?
This is just, I just wanted to present. Sorry.
So, you know who you are.
I want you all to clap.
Yes.
Yes.
Come on up.
Yes.
That's okay. I'll give you another one.
All right.
I don't know how to do that.
There we go, ready? One, two, three. One more smileys.
Last one here. I always say to make sure your side was reflecting up at the glass.
All right, there you go.
Now, everybody in the audience, we are gonna have a short reception out in the atrium for Apollo, so you are welcome to join us for a little, I think there's some fruit and cakes or whatever out there, but a little refreshment and to thank Apollo for his hard work, and then we've got to come back in here and better term you, but we will have
Ward four seat on this city council, residents interested in applying for the vacancy must be U.S. citizens and at least 18 years of age. You must be a resident of Commerce City for 12 months, a member of Ward four for at least 25 days, a registered voter, and not currently serving any criminal sentence for a felony. Letters of entrance should include your name, a statement of intent, and an affirmation that you will meet all eligibility requirements. Please submit your letter to the city clerk's office beginning on August 8th. Letters must be received no later than 5:00 p.m. on Monday, August 13th. Letters may be mailed, faxed, emailed, or hand-delivered. Interviews of applicants that meet the required qualifications will be conducted during the August 20th city council meeting. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to go into recess for 30 minutes for a reception in the atrium honoring Councilman Diaz's service on the city council. Nicole, or Councilwoman Frank?
I would like to motion for a recess for 30 minutes for a reception in the atrium honoring Councilman Diaz's service on city council.
Thank you. Councilman Wadiola?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll be back in 30 minutes. It's 8:03 p.m. Motion is carried. We'll be back in thirty minutes. It's eight oh three P.M. Ward four seat on this city council, residents interested in applying for the vacancy must be U.S. citizens and at least eighteen years of age. You must be a resident of Commerce City for twelve months, a member of ward four for at least twenty-five days, a registered voter, and not currently serving any criminal sentence for a felony. Letters of entrance should include your name, a statement of intent, and an affirmation that you will meet all eligibility requirements. Please submit your letter to the city clerk's office beginning on August eighth. Letters must be received no later than five P.M. on Monday, August thirteenth. Letters may be mailed, faxed, emailed, or hand-delivered. Interviews of applicants that meet the required qualifications will be conducted during the August twentieth city council meeting. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to go into recess for thirty minutes for a reception in the atrium honoring Councilman Diaz's service on the city council. Nicole, or Councilwoman Frank.
I would like to motion for a recess for thirty minutes for a reception in the atrium honoring Councilman Diaz's service on city council.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Wadiola.
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll be back in thirty minutes. It's eight oh three P.M.
All righty. We are back from the reception, wishing Paulo Diaz good luck on his endeavors. We're going to get back into our meeting. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? With that being said, I have had a request to remove, I'm trying to find it here, the resolution that is wrong.
It's Resolution 2018-48.
Thank you. 2018-48 will be removed. All right. That'll leave us with five items on the consent agenda. All righty. Now that that's been removed, is there any others that council wishes to remove? No? Mr. Madera, your light's on. I am open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Madera.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the five items remaining?
Ordinance 2174, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Grams's Youth Services grant funds in the amount of $53,774 through the support of the Youth Epic Program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2175, an ordinance amending Section 1-3003, Prence A of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to reduce to 364 days the maximum potential term of imprisonment for misdemeanors under the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. Resolution 2018-59, resolution appointing members to designate boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2018-60, resolution approving sale of property by quitclaim deed to Unlimited Storage LLC. Resolution 2018-61, resolution amending council policy number CP-21 regarding filling of council vacancies.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously by the city council this evening with seven to zero vote. One vacancy and one excused absence. All right, now we'll take up Resolution 2018-48. We have a revised copy. And I am open for a motion. And I'd like to make a point to say there was also copies in the back that were available for residents to see. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve re- consent agenda 2018 day, oops.
Resolution 2018-48.
Resolution 2018-48 with the revised copy.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-48. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-48, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the City of Commerce City pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act.
Thank you. I have a motion. The second title's read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll go to ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2177. Is there anyone on council who has any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward to address the council on this matter? Saying none, I'm open for a motion to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Douglas.
Yes. I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2177 by council seated.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, then I'll ask the city attorney to read the title.
Ordinance 2177, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating portions of the unencumbered fund balances of the General Fund, Fleet Fund, Information Technology Fund, and Police Donation Fund, transferring to designated funds portions of the unencumbered fund balances in the General Fund, Water Acquisition Fund, and CAPP Fund, and reaffirming certain prior appropriations for a total amount of $4,419,222, and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
I'm asking for a roll call vote. Not working? Can you reset it, please? All right, try it again. For the record, ordinance 2177 is introduced by the city council unanimously this evening. Move to ordinance 2178. Is there anyone on council who has any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2178, council seated on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Saying none, will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2178, an ordinance amending Section 3-1200 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relative to the authorization of jury fees.
Thank you. I ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2178 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. All right, now we'll move into the presentation portion of our meeting. And we'll start with City Manager McBroom on the second quarter 2018 work plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to present these quarterly updates to city council. In the interest of time, I am going to shorten the presentation. I'll be very brief tonight and leave it to members of city council to ask specific questions. I would note at the front end of the presentation that all of the data in the presentation was taken from the second quarter executive report. It was also included in your packet, and because it's included in the packet, it's available to citizens to access online by accessing the city council packet. There's a tremendous amount of information in the executive report for anyone who would like additional information about our progress towards accomplishing the commitments that we've made at the start of the year. I would begin by reminding council and folks who may be watching at home that the work plan is an administrative work plan. And work on developing this work plan begins early the prior year. So, city council had a planning retreat in January of 2017, and that's where city council at the time began to identify priority work that they wished city staff to emphasize in the development of the 2018 work plan and in the development of the 2018 budget. Although the work plan contains 20 total outcome areas, city council in its retreat in January of 2017 did ask city staff to emphasize these six priority outcome areas. So, the work plan does include work intended to help city council accomplish work in these important outcome areas. The work plan itself, again, is our way of managing performance within the organization. Everything city staff does has to have a purpose. Resources are limited, needs in the community are great, so the challenge is always identifying what's the most important what for us to do. And this work plan helps us identify that work all the way down to what we call the tactic level. It's also a way of demonstrating how the work we do every day helps accomplish city council's goals for the future of the Commerce City community. This task bar shows the overall status towards our work to implement the annual work plan. And I would say it's very good news. We've had challenges already this year in terms of development activity in the community. We've lost some key staff, but yet I think we're doing a very good job of meeting the commitments that we made as part of development of the work plan last year. So, this overall summary is all of the work that's identified in the work plan, and that includes a total of 809 tactics. So, there are five city council goals, and those goals are broken down in our performance management plan, all the way down to 809 tactics. Information is collected every quarter on our progress to accomplish those tactics. All of those results roll up into this overall status bar. The report tonight is organized based upon city council goal. All of the work in the work plan is organized based on city council goal. So, I'm going to skip through the highlight slides, just touch on the overall city council goal slides. This first city council goal, which is focused on developing a vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status, shows positive progress towards accomplishing the objectives laid out in the work plan. Certainly, one of the most important areas of emphasis for city council is retail development in the city, particularly sit-down restaurants. And we are having a study session after the regular meeting tonight to delve a little bit more deeply into that topic. City council goal number two revolves around creating a financially sound city government. Again, making very solid progress on all of the work identified in the work plan. We are showing some items in that yellow category indicating some disruption, very few in the major disruption category. And I would point out, and we've talked about this in the past, the goal of the work plan is not necessarily to have everything green. It's to honestly track our progress, identify where we may not be, where we would like to be at this point in the year, and make adjustments. It's also a way for us to address new priority work that comes to us during the course of the year and work it into the work plan and make other adjustments to work assignments so we can take on that new priority work. Let me just flip a couple of pages here. The area in the work plan where we're seeing the most disruption is in city council goal number three. This is the city council goal that deals primarily with the city's capital projects and how we manage the built environment within the city. So, areas where we are showing some disruption in goal number three are in some of our capital projects. And again, if you look at the executive report, you will see some additional detail, not only where we are seeing some disruption, but what steps are we taking to get those projects on track? Additional areas of disruption within goal number three have to do with our progress towards inspecting properties as part of our Commerce City Clean Program. That's the work our neighborhood services inspectors do. We've been down a couple of inspectors, and so our progress to inspect all properties in the city is not where we wanted it to be at the mid-year point. So, there are some adjustments being made in an effort to catch those numbers up by the end of the year. So, again, I'm moving very quickly through these items because of the amount of items we still have left on our agenda tonight. City council goal number four shows better progress. There is some disruption within city council goal number four. Goal number four is focused around improving resident health and safety. A number of action items related to parks, recreation, golf are in goal number four, as well as work that the police department is doing. But we're showing good progress in goal number four. Goal number five does show some disruption. Goal number five has to do with encouraging community involvement and building trust within the community. Areas of disruption in goal number five has to do with a records of management system that is still a key goal of ours towards better managing information and records within city government. And also, the police department had some aggressive goals towards improving the amount of community policing work that we're doing citywide. Because of the resources taken to complete the assessment work with the Department of Justice, we're a bit behind on where we'd like to be. The good news is we're getting great feedback, great information, great assistance from the Department of Justice that will certainly help us do that community policing work in a better fashion going forward. So, I promised a quick run-through of the work plan. Again, there's a tremendous amount of information in the packet that's available to anybody who has access to the internet within our communities. Happy to answer more specific questions about anything within the work plan, but in an effort to keep the agenda moving tonight, I've skipped through a number of those slides, but happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on council have any questions for the city manager concerning the second quarter report update? Saying none, thank you, Brian. All right, now we'll move into the capital program update. Michelle Halsted will be handling this one.
Michelle is pinch hitting tonight for Scott Hergenrader. You're used to seeing Scott Hergenrader with our program management team provide the quarterly updates. He is ill. Michelle's going to try to beat my time in providing the quarterly capital project update.
Excellent. And our co-chairs from the Capital Improvement Program Citizen Advisory Committee also cannot be here this evening, so they send their regrets as well. A brief background for those of us who have been around, but certainly for new folks. This ballot measure, this 2K ballot measure, was approved by voters in 2013, and we committed to complete five projects in five years using the stated program goals and objectives. This is a breakout of the monthly report that we provide in the city manager's update, but really wanted to highlight the revenues and expenses that have occurred to date. And you're seeing certainly a higher level of expenses in 2018, primarily because all, most of our projects are now online, and so we're incurring additional expenses related to O and M. This is just a visual of what our monthly report is provided, and this quarterly update is really meant to supplement that and provide just a high-level assessment of what we've done and how we're moving forward. We are on schedule and within budget when you look at the five-year commitment that we provided. And if you look at our, how much money we have expended, we're 93% complete on funds expended, but we have 7% yet to go. And, you know, I know that probably is like, oh, thank goodness, but man, that last 7% is going to be a race to the finish. A couple highlights from the last quarter, and I know all of A couple highlights from the last quarter, and I know all of you know this, but we opened the Bison Ridge Recreation Center in the summer of 2018. This center, we had 1,000 people at that event on the 25th, which was Memorial Day weekend. In the first seven weeks of operation, we've sold 3,211 annual memberships, and we've seen more than 34,000 people come through that facility. So it's really exceeding expectations, and a lot of credit goes to the Parks and Recreation and Golf Department for all their work to provide programs and services. Also, on the other highlights from Q2, if you've been to Eagle Point, it's a different environment over there. We're doing the work in the lobby and the south entry, and we're also doing the therapy pool additions. We've also really started working on the parking lot. We're hoping to pave that shortly, as well as demolition of the locker room. So, you know, one of the unique challenges to that facility is that we're doing the renovations while we're still open. And certainly, we've seen usage, you know, reduce as more and more work continues, and we'll talk a little bit about that in Q3. The other thing we're doing is we're starting the furniture fixtures and equipment procurement process. So we will be purchasing new lobby furniture, the tech lab, and some other things, and so you'll start to see some of those procurements come forward in the next few months. It's hard to believe that December 31st will be here before we know it. Another thing we were able to complete in Q2 was the Highway 2 widening project. Unfortunately, Mother Nature didn't help us out with that event, but we now have four lanes of traffic open throughout the corridor, as well as that multi-use trail. The other project that we're doing with 2K funding is the Tower Penya on-ramp. So we did complete the northbound lanes on Tower Road, and we've switched traffic, and so that project is expected and remains on schedule to be complete by the end of this year. We've also done new alignments, and we're starting to move the dirt and build that new on-ramp that's been long awaited. This coming quarter, in Q3, we will be at Eagle -- really focused on Eagle Point and Tower Penya. So we'll be doing the new south entry canopy. We'll be doing those assisted restroom renovations. Those are those family bathrooms that are on the south side. We're also removing that existing track surface, and we're going to start the fitness area construction as well. So if you recall where you did the grand opening, and we almost had you all take out the wall, or --
Each other.
Or each other. We're going to be starting to open that area up as well, so we'll have some reduced hours and gym closures to make that happen. On the Tower Penya ramp, we're going to continue paving. We'll also be setting bridge girders for that new on-ramp. For those of you, we have to go over the second creek, so we have to put those little bridge there and continue doing the on-ramp construction. So I don't think I beat the City Manager's time, but I am open to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions? Sorry, does anybody have questions for Michelle on the update for the capital programs? Seeing none, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All righty, administrative council business. Does anybody have any? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Going to ask the Council if they would grant me the opportunity to work with -- excuse me, with the parks, I'm sorry. Trying to get my thoughts together here. With bringing forward the application for alternate fuel vehicles that could deal with our city fleets with, I think it's 14,000 pounds or less, diesel, electric vehicles, different types of alternate fuel vehicles. There's an application back in June, there was an application for charging stations, and we met that deadline. So this deadline opens August 15th, and it closes September 27th. And asking Council if they could allow me to work with the city in presenting and see if there's an opportunity for us to look at purchasing alternative vehicles within our city.
Council? Anybody have any comments or concerns or questions with their request?
I have a question.
Yeah?
So I'm under the understanding that we don't purchase vehicles anymore for the city. We lease them because it's cheaper to go that route. Is that correct?
This works on leases as well.
Councilman Madera is correct. We did just enter into a new agreement with Enterprise Leasing, so if we were to purchase alternative fuel vehicles instead of leasing them, we'd have to check to see the implications that would have on our contract with Enterprise.
And this would work with leases as well?
I'm just not sure the terms of our contract with Enterprise. I don't think our current contract with them includes alternative fuel vehicles because we weren't contemplating that a year ago when we negotiated that contract.
Okay. I think I have a solution. I'd ask that Councilman Douglas sit down and talk with City Manager, give him the information on the application process, and have the staff vet if there's an opportunity for this to benefit us through our leasing program, and then come back and let us know so that we can be kept in the loop as to what the application requires and everything else. But I think it's great that Councilman Douglas is bringing it forward. I want to make sure that we don't overstep our bounds, and I'd like to have Mr. Douglas give Mr. McBroom all the information and follow-up. Does that help?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. I just didn't have my thoughts together on that. My mind was on other subjects here, so I apologize for that, but I can certainly forward that information, and I know we were going to sit down and speak about the budget as well, so we'll do that at the same time. Let's see, my other request is that there's been a lot, I'm sure, a lot of council members here are getting requests and complaints from our citizens about parking throughout their city. Some people are saying there's eight or 10 cars parked in front of their homes from one, just one home, and I know we talked about this in the past. Is there any schedule in the next month or two with their study sessions that deals with our parking issues in our city?
Our intent is to schedule a study session this fall sometime. I don't believe we've added anything to the work schedule as of yet, so we will get busy identifying a date and add it to the work schedule. The plan was certainly before the end of the year. There's some important policy questions there, I think, for City Council to address.
Okay. And the last thing is when I attended the conference for infrastructure and transportation in Little Rock, and I'm sure everybody's seen a domino commercial about potholes and all that, where they have a pilot program they're running. They do have money cities could allocate and ask for, but through a process of the community outreach by going to the website pavingforpizza.com, if you put in our zip code, and so many residents do that, then they would actually help fund pothole repairs in our city. So I decided I wanted to add that as a fun side of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Wadiola?
Yeah, I got a -- two things. We all got an email from Adams 14 and the Tipton Organization. They're doing a branding campaign, and they just want some feedback from Council, and I know they've been asking us to meet with them. I just want to encourage Council to give really honest feedback to see where this goes. That's one. And the second thing is I was going to see how we could get a study session on looking how we could get a paid mayor going through the future. Commerce City's growing, and I think what Mayor Ford has done for many, many years is amazing, and we're going to be losing a great person and knowledge, history next year. And he's put the city, he's put the Council before his family, his career, and I just want, when we're moving forward, to really get someone that's dedicated, and this is their number-one job, just like Mayor Ford did. It's unfortunate that he didn't get paid, and -- but I think we got to start looking to the future of how we're going to run this, how we're going to represent the city and how the mayor will, now that we're getting into the 60,000 range and higher of residents. So I'd like to see if we could start exploring some options with that for Council, some research, so.
Staff usually brings us back comparisons with other cities. I'm sure that they could probably bring back what some other cities are doing. I think, as far as I know, the only cities that have paid mayors right now is Denver and Aurora.
Yeah.
But I do think there's some discrepancies in the pay between some of the other cities, and I know it won't affect me, but -- which is fine, but I want to make sure the next person has the opportunity to be able to survive.
Right.
So with that said, I think it would be fair to have the Council, over, I don't know, the next six, eight months, be able to identify what other cities pay their Council and what other benefits are as we get closer to the next election cycle.
And also, Mayor, your input would be, I mean, appreciated because you've done it. So that's kind of why I wanted to do it in a study session, so we could all just discuss that.
Good. All right, thank you. Is there any other council administrative business? Couple items I wanted to bring up. First and foremost is I usually, well, I always do a moment of silence before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I usually try to identify when we have a loss. And I want to make sure that Mr. Douglas knows that we give him our condolences on the loss of his father-in-law. He was not here at the last meeting and was out of town dealing with family needs. So our condolences to Mr. Douglas. I wish I would have remembered that, to mention that at the time of a moment of silence. And the other thing is on the time that he was out dealing with this family crisis, we helped celebrate his birthday for him while he was gone. And I always try to make sure that I recognize council members on their birthday. So I know it's a little late because you weren't here, but happy birthday, Councilman Douglas.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the condolences as well.
Yep. All righty, reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. We did distribute a fairly short City Manager update last week. Happy to answer any questions at any time if council members have them. That's it.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I wanted to note that on August 20th, I intend to bring an item forward regarding a retainer agreement with a law firm regarding the opioid litigation, potential that we have discussed in the past, for Council to formally consider that agreement on the 20th. So if you have any questions in the interim, I'll try and get it out in advance with an update. And then in addition, I provided a monthly litigation report last week, so if there are any questions about that, I'm always available to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a few things on my report. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for, I think, one of the better county fairs that I've had the opportunity to attend over the years. Things were set up better. The only thing I know they know this is a problem, but I want to help them along. They've got to get better access and egress into the fair. It was really trying at times with two lanes in and have to drive all the way around. It made it cumbersome, and I know the Commissioners are working towards another entrance/exit. I've talked to them about it, and I am encouraging them to get that done. But the fair was one of the best I've seen over the years, the setup, the way it was set up. So I want to thank them. Then I had a meeting with Oakwood Homes that went well, myself and the City Manager. I want to mention National Night Out. I was unable to be here that night, but however, was here in spirit. I want to thank our police officers and the efforts that they put into everything to get the residents out and be supportive. I know some of our Council was here for National Night Out. Cultural Council had set up their music in the park that was rained out and brought it here for that event, so thank you to the Cultural Council as well. I happen to have some prior obligations, given the fair at the time. I was that evening doing a pie judging for the pie contest at the fair, which was rather fun. Everybody said, be careful, you can get some bad pies. I tried 11 different kinds of pies, and I have to tell you right now, there wasn't a bad one in the bunch. There were some exceptional ones, but there wasn't a bad one in the bunch.
Some of them were cow pies.
No, no, no. Cow pie was outside, Mr. Douglas. Cow pie bingo. Of course, I was there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for Commerce City Rotary Club with our cow pie bingo event, as were several other members of the Rotary Club. And it went okay, not as great as we thought it would be, but we got through it. I want to mention that tomorrow night is the Community National Night Out events that will be going on. There will be block parties all over in different places. One of the biggest ones that I've known, heard about is Pioneer Park. There's several organizations that have reserved space at Pioneer Park, so we're expecting a big turnout for that event, and that event tomorrow night, from my understanding, is from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then Thursday night is our last but not least Neighborhood Outreach, and that event will also be at Pioneer Park. There will be a concert. Of course, the city will be there grilling hot dogs and doing normal stuff, but all the other entities will be there as well. So come on out to the Neighborhood Outreach Thursday night at Pioneer Park. And Brian, what time will that be?
Six to eight.
Six to eight again. All right. Perfect. That will conclude my report. Well, no, it won't. I went to the groundbreaking for Central I-70. I want to thank staff. Michelle Halsted was there, as well as some of the folks that, from upstairs, that take care of me, Jody. But it was a very interesting event. What I would tell my residents is I know I-70 is not our number-one priority for highways in Commerce City. However, it is a major highway that has a huge impact on our community. We did get to put a shout-out for 270. 270 is a major priority for us from a state highway perspective in Commerce City, and we have constantly let the State CDOT know that our concerns of 270 and the repairs that are necessary. So that event went well, and I'm looking forward to some dollars being spent that will have a positive effect on transportation from a regional perspective in our area. Now with that, I will conclude my report. Does anybody have anything they want to add or bring forward to this Council before adjourned? Seeing none, thank you all for coming. We are adjourned. Now, if you'll all join me in our study session room, we will go take care of our study session. What do we got in there?